Okay, so if we're all here, we're going to start the meeting. If everyone could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Be accepted.
Ellen, can you repeat that? You were muted.
Oh, sorry. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Ashley Garrity be accepted effective June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
All right, budget discussion.
So, so what I put here into the public section of the board of the board docs was again the repeat of the results of our of our budget. Of 6,875 ballots, well, 608, 6,890 were mailed out. A few were returned as the address is not valid. Of 6,875, we had about 2,235 returned. We can certainly focus on the fact that our budget went down by 26 points. I'm actually going to focus on the fact that two thirds of our eligible voters did not vote. And the reason that I want to focus on that one for a moment is because we spent a lot of time in the past couple of years trying to create better access for our voters. Bringing all of our away games home, making sure that we had had chicken barbecue or dinner there, putting awards on the same day. So parents who were taking a day off could also vote on that same day. This is not an access issue because the ballots were mailed straight to their house. So I would definitely like to make sure that we have some conversation about how we might go about getting the other two thirds to vote. Whether it's a revote this year or if it's a revote next year. The second piece that I would really like to focus on is that we don't have any legitimate guidance from the governor. And I may lean on Michael Luby, our board attorney to to elaborate for me. But at the moment, we can't take action on something that we don't know. And so I've been asked by a few residents, why don't we have a plan B? Well, we have the plan B, we just don't know if it's legal for us to do anything with our plan B. So, Michael, could you just elaborate on that for a moment? And he's muted.
Okay, Mike, can you hear me now?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, I checked the governor's website again this morning, and there is no new executive order. Despite the promises, there was one on Monday night that did deal with elections, but it dealt almost exclusively with village and town and special district, library, school district, or not school district, fire district types of elections which were put off to a date in September. And addressing a few other minor issues with regard to those elections, the executive order on Monday night did continue the liberalization of the rules regarding absentee ballots. So I think we can probably expect that to continue. But at the moment, we do not know for certain what date is going to be set for a revote if you choose to do that. It cannot, under the prior executive orders, be prior to June 9th. And the information that came from the governor's office on the 10th of the month was that it would be more likely the 21st or the 28th of July. No information has been given yet about what special procedural rules will be provided with regard to notice, for example, or with regard to whether or not you would be permitted to do a an in-person vote or would be required to, again, do a full absentee, full ballot decision. So one of the decisions you have to make, obviously, is whether or not there is even the potential for funding that extra effort. I understand that the one this month had the total cost, which was some 400% your usual cost for an in-house election.
So normally, we spend around $4,000 on an actual vote. This time, it's in excess of 18,000 without the full bill coming in yet. We did reach out to get a quote if, in fact, the board were to decide to do another revote. I mean, clearly, some of the printing is done from the first time in trying to create the logos. Don and I had some conversation yesterday about perhaps changing the face of the envelope. Don, do you want to break in here?
Yeah, so, you know, just talking with a bunch of the community members, you know, they didn't realize that they'd received the votes. So here's what the vote looked like.
Ballot?
Yeah, so anybody could have basically, you know, put this in the recycle bin or whatever. So I'm talking with Sandy and Laura yesterday, talk about maybe up here, put the Eden logo, the official E up there. And then, I don't know, Michael, if this is legal, but put, you know, something on the front of the envelope saying budget material, absentee ballot vote or something like that. So it's, it kind of stands out that, hey, this isn't junk mail.
So the conversation that I had with the mailing agency yesterday is that they could put stamp right on the front of it, contains Eden School Budget Vote, Please Vote Today, in a white envelope instead of that federal brown.
I don't think you'd have a problem with that on the outer envelope. When you're dealing with absentee ballots, the real issues that the state law has is protecting the privacy of the vote itself and the ability of the district to authenticate the vote, which is why you have that two inner envelope issues. You've got the ballot itself that does not have a signature on it. Then you put it in another envelope that is sealed and it that's signed and there's identification on it. That's so you can check against the against the rolls before the envelope is even opened. And then you can separate them out. And then the electors can count the two piles to make sure that the number of envelopes and the number of ballots are the same. So that the secrecy of the ballot is preserved. The envelope that the entire packet goes in, I think that you'd be able, I think, to have a little bit of leeway on making that more clear and more identifiable. That would be a very defensible thing.
And there seems to have been school districts that use different sized envelopes, too, like a 911 and a 14, or a 910 and a 12. And so we are checking on the sizes of the envelopes as well to make it look more noticeable. Michael, there also was a few questions that came through prior to the first vote about, and you addressed this slightly. So I'd really like you to elaborate a little more on that secrecy piece where people really believe that if they sign the attestation envelope or filled out the information that everyone would know how they voted, when in fact, that's not the case. Because the person who opens the ballot is not the same person who checks the outside envelope. We've always had absentee ballots. And so there's always been that level of privacy or secrecy to how someone votes. So I'd like to assure people that that's certainly being kept integrity as well.
That would be a good thing to address, I think, on your website.
Okay.
With with a essentially a highlighted front page piece that just says, how does this work? How is your privacy protected? And that does, with a few bullet points, explains what the what the elements are and how you separate out what's identifiable from the ballot itself that is not.
Okay, I appreciate that. We can certainly do that. So we don't know whether we can even do a revote yet, or whether the board is interested in doing a revote. I think it's important for Laura to back up here and show you what a contingency budget would look like. But even before she does that, we have some questions about what to do in the meantime. So we certainly have to address that in the way of a temporary emergency order, just to even be able to operate the plant come July 1. And whether that emergency budget is considered a contingency budget? Is it an emergency contingency budget? So Laura, are you ready to address that?
I have not received the answers back that I'm, they're still researching that for us, so I don't have a definitive answer at this time.
So basically, what that means is that come July 1, we have no way to do payroll. But we don't know, we have no authority to do payroll, and we have no direction on how to do payroll, even if we could.
Or how to pay any bills or anything for insurance, anything.
Okay. Okay.
Sandy, can I ask a quick question? Um, as I'm sitting here thinking, has, not that they'll be able to provide us with an immediate response, but have you had any contact with Galvin's office or DPHR's office?
I did yesterday. I spoke to, I spoke to Jim Rainey. I also spoke with Mitch, who's our ladies on for Senator Galvin's office. And they're certainly aware of what the issues are. There are two districts in the 716th area code in this situation. The conversation I had with Michael Luby yesterday was that the rest of the districts seem to be out closer to Eastern New York, where they're not even in Phase 3 yet. And if, in fact, the governor's going to make a decision on a revote, he's going to try to do it statewide. Michael, do you want to jump in on that a little?
Yeah, I'm almost sure, based on everything that the governor has done in the 44 executive orders that have been part of this pandemic pose clause to date, that they're going to continue to do a statewide address. And the education law even in normal times sets a statutory date for the first election. And then, in normal times, a statutory date for the revote, which would have been in June, which would have meant that normally you would be at the point of knowing whether or not you had the option of passing your regular budget or an amended budget, or if you were left only with the option of a contingency. So I think it's going to be on the same date. We have, our firm has one other client who is in the same situation down in the Mohawk Valley. And we've sent them a resolution almost identical to the one that I prepared for you on Monday that did adopt a contingent budget with the with the notation built into it that you were going to go to a revote on the on the date. And the idea there was that the decision may be to do this essentially a contingency, contingency budget, but still go to revote if you can afford it, if you want to do it, to see if you can recapture some of the the money that would not be available to you under the strict contingency budget. The under the law, you do not have to go to revote. That's always in your discretion. What you can go immediately to a contingency budget, or you can take the second bite of the apple. But here, we've got this unusual situation where it's not chronologically possible to have a revote before the end of the fiscal year. So we have to find a way that has not really been clearly addressed in the executive order. So we're saying, okay, well, you've got to have a practical answer. There's got to be a way to to function and pay your essential bills come July 1. And that's why making the decision to go to a contingent budget, either as your final decision or as an interim step pending the revote, are the two primary vehicles that are available to you for the moment. And and you really need to take a decision on doing one of those two things before the end of the fiscal year.
In our last meeting, Michael, we talked about the possibility of another meeting here prior to July 1, so that the board could take action on that. Hopefully, waiting for the governor to make a decision before that, so that they know what they're voting on.
Can can we have some just really basic discussion if we were to adopt a contingency budget? What that looks like for us as far as?
Yep, Laura has that for you, so that you can see exactly what that means and what the implications are for it. But I would also ask, though, that that if, in fact, the conversation continues about going to a revote, that we do two things. That we let our public know that a revote does not mean that there was a problem with the first one. There seems to be some confusion out there that if the school board makes a decision to go for a revote, that that meant that there was a glitch in the first vote. That's not the case. The law allows us to do a revote. Michael was just addressing that. So I'd like to put that up next to the privacy, Michael, because it makes sense to me to try to clear up that confusion. The second piece is that if you choose to go to a revote, and it happens to be a mill in one, is how to address the over 4,600 people who either chose not to vote, forgot to vote, didn't want to vote, or don't feel that their vote is important enough to be heard. And so to for the district to make a decision to do a revote and spend the funds on it to not hear from the entire community about what they want for their community or their school system feels very sad to me. Because you're talking about two thirds of your resident who don't believe that their voice matters. Laura, can you show the contingency budget that Jen was asking about?
Um, yes, as soon as I'm able to share my screen.
Okay.
While you're waiting for that, on the answer to telling the public about the right to to do the revote, it might be useful to go right back to the statute and quote the one sentence out of the statute that actually says it. Because what it says is that in the event that the original proposed budget is not approved by the voters, the sole trustee, trustees, or Board of Education may adopt a final budget pursuant to subdivision 5, that's the contingency budget, or resubmit to the voters the original or a revised budget pursuant to section 2007 of this part. So it's right in, it's right in the statute. It's one sentence. It's fairly fairly simple, that what you're doing is exercising a statutory right and not doing something that is based on an error. That's, that's to the extent that there are people in the community that have that perception, that that's an easy thing to clear up, I think.
Michael, would you mind sending me the exact language that you feel would work?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Can you see my screen?
No. Laura, it was up there and then it went away.
Interesting.
Does listen to have it, can she put it up? I do not have it.
She does not, because we've made changes. Hang on.
So while Laura is doing that, I'm going to come back to that same conversation that I was talking about a few minutes ago. I took some time this past week to take a look at some of the goals that that our community laid out. I see it now, Laura, that our community laid out for our district. And I just want to come back and I want to mention this, and it is up on board docs, that we made a commitment to our parents that we would keep our primary classes below 20. We've done that. We made a commitment to our parents that we would keep our elementary classes below 25. We've done that over the course of the past five years. We have a diverse advanced placement curriculum. 65% of our graduates are in an advanced region diploma, up from the high 40% seven years ago. We're a top 20 district according to Business First, ranking 18 out of 96. We're a top 10 districts in athletics, according to Business First. GLP has been a school of recognition for two years in a row by the New York State Education Department. The high schools ranked number 14 by U.S. News and World Report. We're the top 23% of elementary schools, ranking 63 out of 252. Top 17% of middle schools, top 19% of high schools, top 10% of all districts in science, and in the top 25% of all districts in math and English. These are promises we made to our community that we've kept. And I'm proud, and I'm proud of those. And and my fear is that if we lose program, that you will lose some of those, too. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, I'm going to start then. The first screen is just a reiteration of the budget vote. I'm just going to leave it here for a minute. And then what I'm going to do after each slide, I'm going to ask if there's questions. That way, if you have a question on a slide, I won't move forward until I've addressed the board's questions. I think with it being virtual, that might be the easiest way to kind of keep it a little better organized. So are there any questions on this? So where do we go from here? A contingency, what does that mean? Purchase buses and technology, those propositions two and three were approved. So those are no longer part of the budget and will not be revoked on. There is, in a contingency budget, you cannot increase your tax levy from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year. We will have to remove non-contingent items. We will have no facility usage without 100% prepaid costs. And then there's an administrative cap we must adhere to. The next few slides are going to go into the detail of this. Are there any questions before I move on?
So Laura, is there a detailed slide in regards to no facility usage without 100% prepaid costs? Or do I want to ask the question now?
You might want to wait.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Laura, you stated that the Prop 2 and Prop 3 passed. Does that mean that the district can move forward now in doing what they intended to do with Props 2 and 3?
Yes, the bus purchases and the technology purchases can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Non-contingent items, no equipment purchases that were not in the proposition, no free community use of facilities, Boys and Girls Club, summer recreation, sports, no capital outlay, repairs not made part of the, what had capital outlays, every year, the voters authorized with the budget process $100,000 of repairs to the facilities, upgrades. They are funded at the rate of 72% the following year. That will not happen in a contingency budget, because you cannot do the capital outlay. And that will become part of a future capital project, which gets reimbursed over 15 years. Are there any questions on this slide?
Laura, do we know what the outlay was going to be for this year, or was that still up in the air?
We did that in February, and I'm sorry, Mr. Martin had the information on it. I'm not quite certain. I believe it was along the lines of inside of the building, some, you know, probably HVAC work or something along those lines.
More ceiling tile work.
So the ceiling tile work is last year's that is still due to occur on the other side of the athletic wing, Don. So the ceiling work right now between the gym and the gym and the pool looks amazing. And then there is one that is slated to go in the athletic wing and on the other side. That one is still scheduled because it's already done. It's the next one. That's my understanding.
So Laura, in regards to the community use of facilities, so if that, if we're contingent, what that means is people will have to pay level four rental fees if they want to use our facility and it needs to be prepaid.
Well, not exactly, because it would have to be specifically costed out for each event to make sure that the actual person who signed up, their entire wages are covered.
As opposed to an average cost, which is what right now in our facility usage.
Correct.
Okay.
But but it would be around the level four level of rent, which is not cheap.
I think it's a good estimate to start from and recognize that it could go up or down a bit.
Right.
Where most of these clubs that are listed are level one, which there is no cost to them.
Correct. The other, the other issue with it is, it's not like I can say that I will always use the least expensive person, for example, buildings and grounds, because your contract puts them on a wheels, we'll call it, for community use and extra work, where based on seniority, they go through and they get to say yes or no, they want to do that day, they can do it, they have other things going on. So it's not like you can pre-pick who you will use every time to make a standardized cost because of the contract of the union.
Would it be, would it be safe to say that it's all, and I'm going to put this this example out there. So when Hilbert College rents our turf, it's that level of cost?
Maybe, and Hilbert's maybe a little higher, because now I have to go to the, where we haven't done this at this point, is we have to go back and look at, now, what are our utility costs? What are the actuals on that facility? I mean, there's a lot involved in it. And if the facility were only being used, for example, the turf field, and then we had to go through and clean it because it was being used by Hilbert, we would have to add those costs in, which we would do after the fact typically in the regular community use of the facilities. But in this case, we would have to plan for that in advance, because everything has to be prepaid.
So if I, if I could put two, two clear details on that one, in the past, for our level ones and level twos, so whether it was Town Rec, Boys and Girls Club, might have been PTA, could have been any other Eden organization, we did not necessarily charge them for cleaning, because we may have had cleaners that were on staff already. Or we may have shifted our cleaners in order to make the cost less, because they were Eden people. We're under a different situation with COVID right now, that we can't forego that cleaning. So we may have allowed Town Rec to clean up some of their own locations before. We simply cannot do that anymore. We have to come through under the new COVID standards for cleaning and disinfecting. That would include the bathrooms, the concession stand bathrooms, or any other bathrooms that we have in the building as well. The second piece to it that Laura hasn't mentioned is the liability costs that come with allowing people to use your building. And it's possible that a piece of that liability cost may be contributed to these costs, for actual costs.
Does this mean that the the fitness center and pool usage would also be charged?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and right now, there is no, there is no facility usage for the fitness center, because it's not even in Phase 4.
Wanted to come and use a classroom to conduct a meeting, we would have to charge for them. Everything has to be charged there, because you're in a, you're in a contingent budget. You do not have any support from the voter authorization to spend any money on anything that is not directly necessary for the education of the students.
So whatever membership fees, Ellen, that we have for the fitness center are not true cost.
And the reduction of the, the waiving of the fee for the senior citizens is not allowed under a contingent budget.
And so that also includes things like Adult Swim,
Yes.
volleyball, basketball, the Summer Concert Series, all of our outdoor baseball diamonds, et cetera, et cetera.
So let me give you an example of a conversation that I had with the Town Rec Director regarding the concert series. I mean, certainly, we love that, and we would love to see the concert series come. They need to give two weeks' notice when, in fact, they're going to cancel on a vendor. When there's bad weather, they move inside. We don't charge them for moving inside. We shift our maintenance or cleaners or custodians to come in and open up, lock up, and alarm it. And we also allow for usage of the bathroom. So even if, in fact, Town Rec were to come through and they were to put a porta potty, which we've done in the past, which is certainly the reason why they couldn't, the problem with the weathers continues to be an issue for them. And on those particular days, they would have to pay full price for use of the auditorium at the elementary school and the bathrooms, perhaps, if they chose to do that because of weather, or they'd have to figure out a way to cancel two weeks ahead of time. the bathrooms perhaps if they chose to do that because of weather, or they'd have to figure out a way to cancel two weeks ahead of time.
And they'd have to do in advance and there would be no plugging in for running any speakers or anything like that. Because that would all have to be prepaid.
Laura, is it safe to say that in a contingency budget that you're more likely to be audited, or am I just making an assumption?
Um, I would believe we would be more likely to be audited by the controller. We're in the cycle for it. And, um, he would look at these costs to ensure that we did the correct thing. Because the community wanted us to have a contingent budget.
Okay.
And, and to be clear, this is not a decision we're making. These are the rules that are imposed upon us by New York State.
That is correct.
Michael Gubey, is there any chance that the rules of a contingency budget can be changed or that will be changed, given the situation that's happening across the state, or unlikely?
I think it's unlikely. Uh, this, those, uh, issues are, are pretty well defined in the statute and the series of commissioners', uh, opinions over the years. I think it'd need a, a change of the statute itself by the legislature.
Okay.
For 11 districts, I think the probability of getting that through very fast in the state legislature is, 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 um, not a rosy forecast.
That makes sense.
Are we ready to move on?
Uh, can you back up for a moment for on me, please? When you talk about equipment purchases, what type of equipment, um, are we speaking about?
We're speaking about if a copier breaks, we can't replace the copier. Anything over $500 for white area of cost is considered equipment in our board policy. So if, um, trying to think of something.
Did we have some break in the?
Something in the technology area where the kids go to take tech, tech program. Were to come to its end of its useful life and we would need to repurchase it and it would be over $500. We would still not be able to repurchase it because we cannot use the equipment lines.
And you couldn't put that under the tech reserve?
No, the tech reserve is already set up for specific purchases in the budget. And we can only spend that much in the tech reserve. We can't spend any additional.
Understood.
Didn't we have something break in the cafeteria a year or two ago?
Yes, we had a steamer break. I would have to defer to legal counsel and we would have to look at that specifically under health and safety. If something along the health and safety line were broken. But anything that would be generally used in the buildings or the programs would not be considered eligible. But we would have to see what we would have to do if something broke that was.
Program?
Health and safety.
Health and safety.
Health and safety. For example, um, if something broke and it was over $500 to replace it for, um, like an HVAC or something like that, we would have to reach out, spend the money, get legal guidance, and see if we could actually do anything with that. We may wind up having to repair something that costs $700 because I can't purchase new that costs 500.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are we set? Administrative cap. Administrative costs cannot exceed the prior year percentage of total of administrative plus program costs. So in 1920, our administrative percentage was 12.02%. We would have to reduce our administrative costs by $210,275 to get into a contingency, to go into a contingency budget.
Laura, can you define administrative again? I think there's some confusion between administrator and administrative.
Administrative is your legal fees, it's your administrators, it's your secretaries in the main offices. It's the superintendent's office, it's the business office, it's your auditors that come in and audit, it's the, see, it's your insurance, things like student accident insurance are administrative. The biggest administrative area that we would love to cut is some of the programming that runs our network services that is not used for classrooms, but is used to support things. For example, the software that we use for accounting, that's an administrative software. The network servers and the network repairs are administrative.
So a lot of the stuff that basically got us through some of this COVID and distance learning would get cut?
Well, it would have to be looked at for, um, if we had any areas we could cut. And we'll go through some of those cuts in a few minutes.
Listen, I also, I'm sorry, Laura, I also heard you say that our public relations associate that runs our social media is part of that administrative piece because it comes from our offices.
So we contract with Bosse's for one day a week to have a, a media specialist come out and work on our Facebook page, our Twitter. And she helps us get things together, get things out there. When we are looking for bus drivers, she will go through and she will push out to all Eden residents, an advertisement for bus drivers. Things like that. We will not be able to afford that position. That is one of the things that I'm looking to reduce under the Bosse's line in these cuts that we're gonna go through.
Laura, can you take a moment and just describe the other two components that are not administrative so people understand the difference? It's so confusing sometimes.
There's, everyone received in their budget mailer, a three-part budget. It was administrative, capital, and program. So what the state does is looks at every expenditure a school district has. It's capital means it's for the buildings and grounds and the infrastructure of the physical plant. So capital would be things like buildings and grounds. It's, um, our capital outlay is in capital, but that one is specifically carved out in a contingency budget. And program is everything from the bringing the kids in in the morning on the school bus to what goes on in the classrooms, to the resources need for these special education students, to guidance counselors, um.
Principals?
No, principals are administrative.
Okay.
But the secretaries in the guidance office, here's, here's a way to explain. If you're a secretary in the guidance office, you're part of program. If you're a secretary in the main office, you're part of administrative. So it's not just salaries of the people that you look at and say, well, they're the administrators. I can look at a line and I could say, look how much money we spend on four positions for each, for the principals. That's, there's other things in those line items than just the principal. There are things in there like the supplies, the envelopes, the paper for their offices, things like that are in the administrative section. Program section has supplies as well, but it's textbooks and things like that. Another area we would have to cut under the equipment is we get what is called hardware aid from New York State. And we're allowed to spend the hardware aid for equipment up to the amount that we receive an aid. But every year we budget and spend more than the amount in the hardware aid. And as it was eloquently described to me by our IT director, Lucina Karst, that was, if we only spent the amount of money we get aid on, we would be like a Medicaid district. Because that's just the bare bones that they give you. They give you $19.24 per student. That doesn't buy a lot of computers, Chromebooks, might buy a mouse, but it doesn't buy a lot per student. So are we ready to go into some of the detail?
You're good.
Okay. Budgetary reductions. So we start with our original budget, which was $32,364,315. Last proposition won the buses, which was $674,272 because they're passed. And so we can purchase those buses. The voter said, yes, you can take the money out of the savings account and spend it. Last proposition number two, which was equipment. We have $367,470 that we can spend for the equipment that was approved to be spent out of the savings. That leaves me at a net budget of $31,322,573 before we talk contingency cuts. Does everyone understand? Good. Contingency budget. So we start with the net budget of $31,322,573. Less than non-contingent items. Equipment of $131,875 is contained within the budget that is not supported by reserves. Community use of facilities, $29,100. That was the money for the fitness center. We hired the, the young people to monitor it so it can be open later hours, things like that. Capital outlay, we spoke of $100,000. So our contingency budget, just cutting the cost before the administrative cut is $31,61,598.
Well, I want to come back to community use of facilities because it doesn't cost us $29,000 to run the fitness center. What else is on that line?
There is money in there for buildings and grounds when they come in and clean their salaries are there. If we're charging out to a level four. There, this is where the fund, their salaries go for if technology is needed to assist somebody. For example, wanted to use the auditorium here in Eden Elementary. We said, no, you must have one of our technology specialists there to ensure the safety of our equipment. Those salaries would go into that expense account. There wouldn't be revenues to some extent for any level fours to pay for it all. But if we do it and we utilize it for anyone who's a level one and they get free use, those expenses are not covered by your revenue.
Okay, thank you.
So Laura, the other thing too is capital outlay of, of 100,000 is, is, is taken out of the contingency budget. But then we're also not getting reimbursed the 72 cents on the dollar. So.
In the following year, correct.
Right, yeah. So it's, you know, you're kind of spiting yourself by, you know, having to cut this. You know, for, to get $100,000 worth for $28,000 is, is frustrating.
It's frustrating, but it's not our cut. It's a forced cut.
I, I understand it. I completely understand it. But that's the, the frustrating part about it is, you know, $100,000 worth of work for 28,000 just can't get done.
This actually happened to us a number of years ago. I'm gonna say it was in 2014 or 2015 that we actually found a way to even start doing capital outlays with 100,000. And then in the following year, we couldn't even find the, um, funds to continue it. So we dropped it for a year, which means that we had to start all over again trying to find the 100,000 in the third year. So anything to do with state aid kicks you for two years, not for one.
And the other thought about state aid is it does, we do not increase our income tax to pay for these state aid. Comes out of the budget and quite frankly, we send less money in our region to this, to Albany than we receive in some of our state aid as a region in general. So it's not like you're going to receive a savings in your income tax because we couldn't do a capital outlay.
Okay.
Correctly, and this is not counting a, a potential, um, aid cut from the state due to all the expenses the state incurred for COVID and lack of collecting taxes. I mean, this is a very, um, rosy picture that can get, that could get much worse if, uh, there's no federal funding for the state for education.
And thank you for bringing that up, Ellen, because I just would, received notification yesterday that, um, New York State has cut aids to small cities by 20% for this year. That's $74 million to small cities. They have not yet touched education. But you see where we talked about in the past, the um, lower than 1% of revenue that the governor received in April. And now we're starting to see that he's starting to cut aid to these cities because of it.
It also, it also parallel to what Ellen was stating, doesn't take into any account this budget, any increased cost next year to run school because we have no idea what running school next year looks like. So if we have to do a double run, if we have to do something else, we just don't know that either.
Correct. And this budget was created before the pandemic hit. So therefore we have not really gone into any of those costs yet. And the problem with being able to determine what those costs might be is we've not received any definitive guidance on how to do it either.
Agreed.
So reductions for administrative, we would take $9,000 out of legal fees. We would reduce salaries by $47,457. Those salary cuts are, there would be no overtime for anyone in the administrative and it's not that, and everyone who works in the administrative lines are not salaried. We have CSCA employees in there as well. And it would also take away any funds that were put aside for things like an additional secretary to help in the middle school, high school. Because there's no one to cover breaks. It would remove any potential increases for projects that might have been planned that maybe we would have thought we should set aside some funds because again, 18 months ahead, I have to say, this is the most I can spend. So I always set aside a little bit of money in there just in case there's some sort of project or something that requires substantial work that needs to be done. So there would be no funding for that in the salary lines. Clerical substitutes would be nonexistent for the district offices and the building offices. We would have to find a way to cover, um, illness days, family medical evac time off. If somebody gets COVID-19, we would not be able to get a substitute for them in the building. We would have to see if we could pull from another office to bring them up into the building offices.
That includes vacations too, Laura, because our 12-month, take their vacations throughout the year, not just in the summertime.
That is correct. We kind of talked about Bosse's, 65,000 of the Bosse's cut is, um, oh, pardon me, wrong number, wrong place. Um, we have the cuts to software. And we're gonna get rid of some of the administrative softwares that make the clerical tasks easier. So now we don't have any more clerical hours to add in. But we're going to add more, we have to add more workload for things that the computer system was able to do for us. That will be the similar, also is in here is our media specialist that we hired through Bosse's. There would be no conference and travel for administration, no mileage paid out, no training, professional development of the administrative staff. Contracted services, sometimes we get accounting services help. We come and we find that we need something extra. There will be no actual, will all have to be done again with staff that they'll have to do it in their normal shift, on top of their normal duties. We would have to cut postage because believe it or not, all our postage is an administrative cost. So if you get something mailed to you from one of the buildings, that's an administrative cost, not a program cost. We would have to cut $5,000 off that total. We would eliminate all supplies for the offices. By $8,390, we would cut them. We have miscellaneous things that we have in the budget that would come up to another $4,800 in savings. And student awards throughout the buildings are administrative and we would have to cut them to get to the $210,275 without doing layoffs. Any questions? And of course, if we're gonna take away the computer that assists and makes things, people more efficient. It's hard to lay someone off because then you really have no one to do the work and it just sits there. Because again, you can't pay them overtime.
So I hate to be a wise ass on this, but Michael, I guess we, in the executive order, they'd have to authorize us to be able to have postage to mail out the absentee valid, uh, revote.
Well, actually, Don, that one we specifically code up into the district annual meeting. But the problem there is I would have to cut. The only thing I have left to cut now is people. And I would have to cut someone in order to be able to afford. And I would have to cut someone in order to be able to afford an absentee ballot.
So you're saying we would have to possibly cut a teacher to have an absentee ballot?
No, no. Secretarial or administrative, we would have to cut hours.
Gotcha.
Remember teachers, their program.
Sorry, missing the classifications there, gotcha.
Yeah, it's not an easy thing for people to keep on top of. So here's the summary again. So we would go from the thirty one million, three hundred and twenty two thousand, five hundred and seventy nine dollars. We would remove the non contingent items of equipment, our capital project, that's two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and seventy five dollars. We would remove the administrative costs to get under the cap of two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. And contingent budget would be thirty million, eight hundred and fifty one thousand, three hundred and twenty three dollars. This could be done with board action only and no vote. Or it could become part of the process if we do a revote for a contingency budget. So budget revote, that's another option. Propositions for bus and technology would not be part of a second vote. They were voter authorized on the June sixteenth vote. Well, I realized June sixteenth wasn't the date we had the results. That was the actual vote date, so that's why I'm using it here. Questions surrounding the revote. In person, the cost estimate is about four thousand dollars. Absentee voting, cost estimate about eighteen thousand dollars. The sad part about the eighteen thousand dollars. Two thirds of the people didn't send back their ballots. So we spent a lot of money for people to not be engaged. Amount of the total expenditures for the revote.
I guess this question's from Michael on a possible revote and I don't know if you know the answer since we're in unprecedented times. I actually had three seniors ask me a question last night. Mr. Sudfin, if, if we go out for a revote, will I be able to vote? They've just recently turned eighteen.
Almost certainly yes, if they are, if, if they are registered voters and they've been registered within the time limit line. If they've just turned eighteen, I would recommend that they, they, they register as fast as possible at the, at the Board of Elections.
And I believe our, our social studies teacher, Mrs. Hamlet, that's one of her first priorities in the, the participation in government class that they have to do that. So I'm sure they're, they're registered, but I'll confirm that with them on Thursday.
So Michael?
I, I thought you didn't have to be registered to vote, you just had to be a resident.
For thirty days or more, correct.
Then you'd still be all right.
The problem is, is that we don't, if it's a mail in ballot, we don't know they exist if they're not registered.
So they would have to call or email us to get a ballot because we would not automatically send them because they would not necessarily be on the voter roll. Because in the interest of a cost savings, we would probably use the voter roll that we used for the last election.
There's, there's another item for your website page then, that if you've, if you've recently moved to within the district or you've recently turned eighteen, call us for the vote for your, for your absentee. Because, because you're not on a voter list.
Okay, that's three, Michael.
Are we ready to move forward? Questions now, instead of us asking questions, although if you guys have some questions, I think we made this more of an interactive. I do have questions that we have already received from the public that I'd like to share with you. So do you have questions you want to do before we go on to the next slide?
Let's do the public questions first.
Okay. So the first question, will there be a revote? If so, how will we vote on the same budget or modified one? Will it be in person or in, or mail in? All of those questions from my standpoint are to be determined. We would look to see if we should modify the budget because of new information we have to some extent between now and last beginning of March, when the budget was crafted to incorporate and categorize things properly for the new norm.
Is that because of COVID, Laura?
There, there would be, yes, there could be, for example, we talked about, we might want to consider moving some costs, cutting costs in one place and moving them into putting more in our budget for transportation salaries. Because if I can only put one student in every other seat, that is eleven students on a bus that's meant to hold sixty six, I'm going to have more runs. So we, we would consider whether or not we would be doing more bus runs. Whether, whether or not we would need more technology supports, whether we would need something different in special education. So I think that we would at least want to have conversation, at least I would feel, I would want to have conversations with the other administrators to see are they okay with what we have now?
Michael, do you have guidance?
Go to a revote. Or we could say that we're not going to modify it and we'll do it with budget transfers. So those are questions and things that the board still has to think about. And I would think that it would be incorrect of me to try to pressure them when I've just given them so much information.
Michael, do you have guidance on what Laura was just talking about?
A little bit. The statute of twenty twenty two subdivision four says that a board may resubmit to the voters the original or revised budget. Traditionally, that generally means that you've sent out your, your first original budget or because you're trying to overcome a defeat, you might have tweaked it downwards a little bit. I looked yesterday and I have not found any decision from a quarter for the commissioner that that, that has addressed the issue of what happened if you tweaked that budget up as a political not a political matter in, in, in the generic sense. How does a tweak upward affect your ability to get a favorable vote? My guess is that if you have a fair number of people who are already somewhat hostile to a yes vote for whatever reason, maybe something having to do with the district or having to do with the tax bill, or maybe just anger at the system or anger at the pandemic cause or whatever it might be. Going upward probably increases your risks. The, I think it would be at least an defensible argument that you have that authority under the statute. I cannot tell you that it has not been, that has been done before. I'm still looking at that. I do believe that it would probably increase your, your likelihood of an audit. So being defensible is important. To the extent.
What about not increasing the total dollars, but just reallocating them to cut down on budget transfers that would occur during the year due to the new norm that we didn't know about?
Yeah, I, I think, I think to the extent that you put it out for a revote at the same number, that cuts, that makes a little bit more money available than immediately going to the contingency budget and would, would, would have that impact of giving you some some ability to make fewer transfers or to have more pockets to, to look for, for those transfers. So there's some, there's some, there's some benefit to going back with that initial budget. I think if you tried to go over it, we can defend it. I think you may have the political problem of whether or not it makes it harder to, to, to convert some of those no votes or to, to find some of the, the passive voters to come out and, and help.
Thank you, Michael.
So going, going back to like unknown costs that are basically probably facing, facing us in September. We definitely know there's going to be a, a major increase in the the time to clean everything. The, the materials to clean everything. And then you gotta bring in the next questions, like the additional transportation cost along with, you know, are we going to have to be one supplying masks? And I, I'm, I'm in the middle of a bid right now on, on the business side of things. You're looking at a buck a mask. And this is just a standard surgical mask. You know, do we have to provide, you know, fourteen hundred of these masks a day?
Well, and, and I, I would break in it, I would say to you that there is reasonable reasons to use face shields as opposed to masks on your younger kids.
Which is, which is even more cost, more of a cost.
Yep. And you have to address who owns them and the cleaning and sanitation of them.
The other thing I will say, our BOSI's can, has done a bid. We do have bid results for P P E protective personal protective equipment. So we have, that is available to us. We have already started ordering some of those items that we've needed to bring back just our summer staff. So yes, those costs would continue to escalate, I would believe through the school year, which might mean that we need to reshift our plan thoughts because it may make more sense.
And transportation seems to be the one that's the most confusing at the moment where we just don't have any answers for that. So for example, we might put a JV and a varsity team on the same bus now. We may not be able to overload it that way. We may need to add extra bus, extra bus driver. Just bringing kids into school and taking them home, we're still not sure about that either.
Not to mention the fact that because in the fourth quarter of the nineteen twenty school year, we had less transportation costs without the governor having to do anything other than we get aided back on transportation. We get seventy, seventy six cents on a dollar. We're going to get less aid because we spent less money last year. And the formula runs also on mileage. So even if we spend exactly the same amount of money, our aid will go down to what was projected in the initial budget runs from the governor and then what was adopted by the legislature. So our actual cost, when I submit my S T three in September will be, I expect will be less and will drive down our transportation aid. So I'll have less state aid for transportation, quite frankly, with potentially escalated costs.
Laura, if I could just bring you away from the questions that are listed, there's a new one that just came in to me that said, is it true that facility costs are state mandated? True facility cost is state mandated on a contingency budget?
I don't understand the question.
As opposed to an average cost? That the true facility cost is state mandated as opposed to an average cost?
For charging, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it would be like, for example, you know, somebody wants to rent a pool, chemical cost, electrical cost for running the filter. Technically.
Putting more water in.
Yeah, exactly. So you gotta, it, it's, it's cost accounting to the extreme measure.
And if, and if in fact, there are people in the bleachers, now you have to clean those now. We may not have cleaned those before. Same thing with the locker rooms. We've always cleaned the locker rooms, but there may be an enhanced requirement.
And we can't have software to actually use all those calculations to do it.
Well, the problem is those calculations are done in the business office. And we already are overwhelmed with the reporting test to New York State for the accounting end. And now we would have to have, without any additional time allowed, find a way to incorporate cost accounting into it. And the problem is just time and money of getting people to be able to do it. And quite frankly, if you overwhelm people, you have more chance for an error. So I have concerns about that piece and the fact that under the administrative cap, I can't offer them overtime and anything that was set aside for projects. This would be something that in a normal time, if it were planned, we might have used some of that excess salary money to create a project to look into it, to see what it would cost. Now that's going to be done on top of everything that already is happening in the district office, in the business office.
Laura, do you want to move on to number two?
Yes, can you explain what cost control measures in the district has already put in place or plans to put in place for next year? So our cost control measures that we put in and we always put in is we look to use BOSI services, which we received state aid from in the following year for as much as possible to maximize those costs. We look to bid items, anything that is over five hundred dollars for one item has to be bid to several vendors. We do a bid every year for our, our office supplies to keep the costs down. We join in with other BOSI's for bidding things that were too small to bid on our own technology. Nurse equipment, the personal protective equipment is a great example of it. We bid out our insurances. We look every year to see if there's a way to cut any costs in our insurance areas. Over the last two years, we've changed our liability carrier, our student accident carrier and our health insurance carrier. All that created cost savings for the district. So we're continually working on cost control measures.
That would be including using the Suburban for trips as opposed to paying mileage out to people who are, are going on a conference.
Well, that doesn't sound like you'd save anything. There's a double edge to that. We are also saving in potential liability costs because if the superintendent is driving to another district to meet with another superintendent in her personal car and her brakes fail and she hits someone and they're injured. That comes back on the school district because she's within her work day. So if we have people going in a vehicle that we know is safe, everything is working, working well on. We, we know the level of care to that vehicle that also helps us save.
That's why, that's why I use the Suburban this past year everywhere instead of my own car. It was wonderful. Yep, okay.
Can, can we just also talk about the fact that our cost control measures haven't just been for this past year. It's been, I mean, what, over the past seven years, we've spent a lot of time and energy right sizing the district. And we lost a lot of really great staff members because of it. But we knew we had to do it because sometimes we just didn't have the student body to support the need for that position or whatever it may be. So our, our cost control measures are always ongoing. I think we're always evaluating, reevaluating and looking at things to see the best way we can utilize the funds that we have without, you know, going in excess and without having to raise our budget every year. But the fact remains that the cost of doing anything anywhere goes up. I mean, I don't know of any district that doesn't see increased expenditures for anything. So we, I think we do a really great job controlling costs as best we can. I mean, the health insurance alone, and thank goodness we got that through this year with the help of the staff, the faculty and staff. And it was a huge cost saving measure for everyone.
You know, Jen, it's a really good point that you bring up because part of the problem in Eden is a lack of growth. And, and Don, you and I and Laura had this conversation yesterday that if in fact the town doesn't see growth, that the burden rests on the existing taxpayers. Many districts that are surrounding us that have either stable increases or a lower increase are actually seeing more growth than we are in Eden. Do you want to elaborate on that, Don? Because I know you probably have papers.
So, you know, having slept a whole lot here in the last week. And I went through and read the, the Eden master plan here the other day. And on page thirty three, it says, the goal of this plan is to see property value growth at a comparable level with growth rates of town expenditures so we can hold the line on property and school taxes. So just diving back into that and diving into some records. You know, here's, here's some facts in regards to what tax base has grown here in Eden. So basically the Eden School District is, is, is made up of So basically, the Eden School District is 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 made up of five townships. Boston has grown at eight percent over the last ten years. So their tax base has grown eight percent in ten years. Concord is nine percent. Evans is four point three percent. North Collins is four percent. Eden is three point six percent. So there is absolutely no growth over ten years to have your tax base grow only three point six percent. And and of these townships that make up our our taxable levy, seventy-three percent of that comes from Eden. So when you have your biggest dollar amount growing at such a a slow rate, it really puts all the the burden on on the taxpayers to basically maintain a school district. There's there's no growth whatsoever in Eden. So we are all, as Board of Elected Officials, volunteered elected officials. I think we need to have our our paid elected officials come up with a plan. So our tax, our our taxpayers aren't, you know, shouldering the whole entire tax burden of the school district. I mean, if if you wanted, and I could share my screen showing where we've basically taken the actual tax percentage of the levy and actually reduced it to the overall budget. I've got that in a spreadsheet, but you know, we've gone from a high of, you know, fifty point seven nine to forty-six point forty-six point nine four. So we've actually tried to take as much off, but with no growth in the town, it it really hampers us. And that's where I can see the frustration of the of the taxpayers in in voting no. You know, are they frustrated with us or are they just frustrated with with taxes as a whole? And, you know, basically the position that Eden's in, there's no growth, so we can't. You know, they've got to shoulder the the whole thing.
I think that's a very good point right there.
And and I so and I agree with Don and like it's been a lot of sleepless nights this past week. And I do think, I mean, the responses that I've gotten from community and and parents, and these are people who just reached out to me. I know how much people support this district. I mean, you see it all the time. Not just from the community, but from the teachers and the faculty and staff, the way that everyone comes out to rally around anything that the district does and and vice versa. The district comes out to rally around the community. And I think that, you know, the in in any particularly small towns, the school districts really are the hub of the community. It's what draws people in. It's what draws young families in. They they like the small town feel. They like they like how, you know, small the school district is, and it gives that really overwhelming sense of community. So I don't think it's that people, you know, don't want, don't support us. I I I feel it and I see it, but then when it comes time to vote, it just doesn't come out. And I think there is just an overwhelming frustration with taxes in general, and we are the only spot that people can really voice that. They don't have a vote anywhere else. So I totally get that. I do. But I also get that we have a a huge responsibility, and I think that we've done a really good job. And I say we, but it's not really we. I just speak as the collective district as a whole, the teachers, the faculty and staff, work, the administrators work so hard to to bring Eden to the, all those statistics that Sandy listed at the beginning. I mean, that that is the hard work of every single person involved. And you know, so many people spend so much of their own money. And I'm going to refer to teachers in particular, making sure their classrooms can run. And I, and it pains me to say that we can't give teachers the supplies that they need to be truly effective and creative because we just don't have the money to do it. And I know that's hard to see in a thirty-plus million dollar budget that we don't have the money to give teachers to buy the supplies that they truly need. But we don't because so much goes into just so many other things. Education isn't what it used to be. It it it's different. It's evolved and it's and it's more costly in a good way. But I think we have to figure out a way to to ease the burden, but still provide that education that people desire, that draws people here. And we can't do that without the community support and the community understanding like what education means to the town. I mean, without it, you're, you know, without a good, strong educational system, it it impacts so many things, right down to property value and and it just, it's it's disheartening. It's sad to see that we're we're finding ourselves in this position, and I understand why, but we have to figure out a way to work with the community so that we can provide what the students need, provide what the community needs and still move forward.
Laura, can you share, release your sharing, screen sharing?
Address all these.
Okay.
So this is the, everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just a spreadsheet that I put together. To me, this is this is my checklist of, it's my report card. Is if if we're doing a good job as as a as a school board. You know, Sandy stated the facts earlier of of where the district's gone, what the what the what the community's asked for and basically what we've provided. So column B is our budget. There's our year-over-year growth. Here's the levy growth. And and this gets back to and and back in twelve and thirteen, we were at our high. The levy basically was fifty point seven nine percent of the the total budget. And and over the years, we've reduced that percentage. It's under forty-seven percent based on the current budget that went out and failed. We could have gone out at 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 two point one percent. We chose to go out at two percent just because we're thinking, hey, we're not going to confuse the the tax formula and all that. But you know, to me, that's that's our check of of where do we stand in regards to are we really taking advantage of the of the tax base or not? And and we're basically, we're driving that down. So my goal at some point in time is to get it below forty-five percent. But we we still need to raise taxes to basically provide all these services that that we're doing. And and to Jen's point, you know, I'm I'm on the Sports Boosters program and the amount of dollars that that we fund that isn't taxed. We haven't bought a uniform for a kid from the school district from from this dollar amount here. There hasn't been one uniform bought in over five, six years. It's all bought by the Sports Boosters. So this number probably should be closer to thirty-three million.
I would tell you, Don, that we haven't bought a uniform since I've been here and I came in two thousand and thirteen.
So, you know, we're we're still, we're trying to drive costs out. And and here's like a perfect example. We've got to spend fifty thousand dollars on new radios because of a frequency change. The radios we have are perfectly fine. It's just, there's a frequency change. It's 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 a government mandated thing that we've got to go spend fifty thousand dollars for new radios.
We did lead testing twice now, right?
It's it's amazing the amount of things that you you have to. And, you know, Alan, you're new to this. Cheryl and Alan, you're you're starting your second term of of being on the board. And, you know, it it gets to a point where you you just sit there and and shake your head. It's like, we've got to spend money on this. And it's it's not that we want to. It's it's government mandated stuff that basically drives you to a point where you you shake your head. It's like, I mean, look at how much that was basically done for for these seniors this past year that lost their their senior season. PTA went out and bought the the garden or the the yard signs. The mass that they're getting, the contribution was done by the Sports Boosters. You know, the town put on the parade last night. Thank you, Missy, for doing that. But these are all things that aren't coming out of the schools. I've talked to other school districts and the parade was put on by the school. The signs were purchased by the school. You know, masks were purchased by the school. It's not happening in our school district here. You know, talking with a a fellow boosters, the Eden Sports Boosters pays, what, sixteen hundred dollars a year for the Huddle Program? Another school district that we know of pays, the school district pays thirty-six grand for Huddle. You know, we're on, we're on shoestring budget here and, you know, other districts are at this and and we can't get a budget passed. But to me, this is, this is my 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 report card of, are we doing our job? And if we were going the other way with a tax levy, I would completely understand the voters voting down our budget. But, you know, we're we're pushing it in the right direction. And we're using reserves. So here's, here's something that also gets brought up in regards to, you know, well, we've got all these reserves you're using and and stuff like that. We're pledging three point five million dollars in reserves to to get through this next year. The voters authorized, you know, a million forty-one thousand for for buses and tech purchases. But, you know, the the rest of the balance is is coming from, you know, the board using this. So that's what the rainy day funds for. That's what the reserves are for. And, you know, prior to this, the budget, we found out the budget got defeated. We were in a capital project meeting and you know, we're talking about having to maintain the the Eden Elementary School. And and there's, there's another capital project looming out there, and that's using part of our reserves. That's, you know, planning for the future. You know, everybody, if you drive by the elementary school, you just see those white chalk lines coming off the the windows. Those all need to be replaced. And I think the number was pretty close to seven million dollars needs to be invested in the Eden Elementary School to to maintain it. It's it's a historic building. It's it's eightieth year of being in a community and, you know, if hopefully we can educate these other sixty-eight percent. And and if we do go out and and can go out and a revote, you know, understand where the money's going. It's, there's not there's not a whole lot of wasted pennies that are are out there. And and trust me, I'm a small business owner. I hate paying taxes.
So, Don, if you parallel that conversation with what's happening at Cogen as well, that that's going to be an important conversation that comes up within the next few months because Cogen will not survive. It's at the end of its useful life. And so if in fact, Cogen becomes an essential component of Prop One of a of a future referendum, hopefully on December fifteenth, and that also does not pass, there's a good chance, with Cindy and I were having this conversation last week, that the entire district will go down because all of your servers come out of that building, which is run by Cogen. And Cogen is on that capital project, and an emergency project won't happen overnight. So it's not like you could even send all of your students home to work virtually because there won't be any servers.
I just want to address, and I'm sorry if I'm moving all over my my internet signal. It keeps, I'm trying to find the best spot. Don, you brought up the issue of growth in the town, and I just wanted to build upon that a little bit, that prior to even my my coming on the board, when the the first financial crisis with the the two thousand and eight banking crisis hit, and it really took a hit. It really affected the school district. I was going to the board meetings, and at the time I had reached out to the town, the members of the town board at the time, asking what their long-term plan was for growth in the district. So this is going back probably two thousand and ten, and I didn't get a really well-received response. And I know, you know, that growth doesn't happen overnight. I I've been to a lot of the, you know, town planning meetings, and and there is a plan in place to see growth in the community. But I know, I also know that there's a lot of people who are resistant to growth, and I guess bringing growth up is important because the community needs to understand that growth is important, not only for for the survival of the town, but for the school district to be successful. And, you know, I would encourage people to kind of understand where what the plan is and how how it's going to be implemented so they can get a better understanding and possibly support it. And I get that growth doesn't happen overnight either, but for me personally, it can't happen fast enough. But it's been a long existing issue in the town, and it's something that I know you know, that the current leadership is trying to right the ship, and it doesn't happen overnight, but it needs to happen. I just think for the survival and the success of the town as a whole, which the school district is a large part of that. So, you know, I, you know, you talk to a lot of people and some people are resistant to it, but I think, you know, done done well and done done right, it it'll be to the benefit of of everybody, including the district. So I just wanted to add that little piece in there. I it's not that it's, I know it's being looked at. I don't want people to give, get the impression that you know, nobody's looking at it. It just, I think from our perspective, sooner the better, the more the better. So.
And I think my frustration lies with what I hear in town, what I hear from people around in the community is there seems to be, I think the town thinks we don't support them and we don't think the town supports us. And it's very frustrating when that happens. And I've gotten very frustrated, especially since the budget failed. You know.
Well, and I think it's a lot of a lot of rumors start, you know, I mean, you get on Facebook and just seeing people's impression of our budget, you can see a lot of misperceptions and you know, you, it's, it's hard not to get on and correct it. So, you know, it it just, I I do think that there is a mutual respect between the district and the town and anybody who you know, fuels the rumors. It's just, it's not helpful at all. It's counterproductive. Is that what you're alluding to, Cheryl, or am I totally talking off?
Yeah, no. I mean, I'm sure that has a lot to do with it, too, that, you know, you know, when someone who's active in the town, you know, makes continued statements about, well, you know, my kids are out of here, you know, at a certain grade level because they don't like the district or whatever, that's very frustrating. I think, or, you know, at least that's what I'm finding recently.
And and to Jen's point about, you know, how things run when rampant on on Facebook and and things along those lines, it's, you know, we're coming up on another presidential election and, you know, a lot of social media got, you know, thrown under the bus, but everything that's posted on face, uh, social media isn't all correct. You know, if you're looking for the the right information, go to the source. And like I've, I've gone to, you know, the the town website to just see, you know, where where do we stand on growth? So this past year, and this is based on the current valuation as of five, five, seven, twenty twenty, the town's only added six taxable partials this year on on thirty-five thousand or thirty-five hundred total partials. So only six new properties are being taxed in this town this year. And this is just Eden, and it and that's seventy-two percent of of the total budget. I'm not sure where, you know, Concord and Boston stands in regards to their additions, but it's it's tough, you know, when you've got other districts like Hamburg and and Lake Shore and and Springville and Frontier that you you see growth happening, and and that's basically taking the tax burden off off the existing tax base. It's already been here.
So where do we go from here? Let's do next steps. Can't take action today because you don't have an executive order from the governor. You have to take action prior to Wednesday. Do you want to set up a meeting date in the next few days to take action on whatever you can take action on by June thirtieth?
Sandy, there were a whole bunch of questions we didn't address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why don't we address them? That's something that people get upset about when I'm in the community is there's some issues that were raised here that that should be discussed and.
I agree. I agree. Laura, do you want to put them back up?
Okay. We're getting some feedback.
We're getting some feedback. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the next question that, um, we went through what would be cut in a contingency budget at this time, did the district save any money over the past three months with the closure of the school? And while this is a preliminary estimate, because it's really hard to do this, because it's that time of year that there's a lot of accounting going on, we feel that we only saved two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And yet the budget that we put out pledged another nine hundred and thirteen thousand of fund balance to cover the budget. So why we only feel at this time, we only have two hundred and twenty thousand and why could it be so low? Well, you're talking about savings in utilities, savings in fuel. They're not that extraordinary for the months of April, May, June. It, it's just, we don't run air conditioning in the classrooms. So the fact that there's no electricity running, that, that's less. And again, you're only talking the two buildings that are on national grid for electricity savings. So again, we have about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars we can contribute at this time. We will have a much more refined answer available at the conclusion of our audit this fall. But I know that's a long time and people don't want to wait that long, but right now we can only come up with when we compare what we spent in this time period this year to last year, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Cause you remember there were some other costs that, um, went up, like we had to purchase insurance for Chromebooks to go into the homes that weren't planned to and things like that. So our net costs were about two hundred and twenty thousand in savings.
Isn't important when I'm asked that, which is quite a lot if I'm in the supermarket is that we still have all the salaries for teachers and everything like that, insurance, those did not stop. The majority of costs did not stop because school was not in session and we had costs for, uh, remote learning. I think that has to be emphasized. So it wasn't such a great saving.
Plus we delivered, um, meals to students' homes.
Yeah, buses were running every day, um, just like they would during a normal school year.
We still had our inspections on buses. We still had to get our bus to keep our buses maintained, fix things. The mechanics still had to be do, in doing that kind of work. So a lot of things didn't just stop because we didn't bring students into the building because we continue to educate them.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was clear that the school was closed, but the school didn't shut down.
Well, and teachers were working every day too. It's not like they weren't working. Staff was working, you know, people, people were working whether they were in the building or not.
And, and people were working at, at all different hours as well too. I mean, it, it, it was, it's a new norm of, you know, when you're, when you're working remotely, it, it's, you don't have a, an eight to five job anymore. It is, you know, basically you're on twenty-four, seven. It, there's no reason why you can't send an email, why you can't do certain things at, at all hours. Just because of bandwidth and quiet time and, and, and stuff like that. Everybody realizes, um, here what it was like to have your whole family home, trying to distant learn, distant teach, distant work. It's, it's not an easy thing. So, um, it, it, it wasn't your normal, you know, seven, seven twenty-five until three thirty school district going on.
When people would ask about the savings for like not having people in the building and yada, 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 I would say it's like my sister and her husband go to Florida for three, four months. Okay? They still pay their utilities here in Eden. Their house still runs. They may not be occupying it, but it's the same idea. Just because there's no students in the school doesn't mean you're still not heating it when it's cold and whatever the case is. And I think sometimes people just assume there's no school. It doesn't cost anything.
Now, one of the things that Laura has alluded to earlier too, is, is that the cost shift. I would tell you that Lucinda's department, our tech department was completely overloaded from day one. And yet there aren't any more of them. And so if we walk into a school year next year where we have to do more of that type of virtual learning or maybe a type of hybrid model, that's the department that's going to see the biggest burden. And that, and that is truly a concern. We are understaffed in that department now.
Let's, let's throw this little scenario out there, Sandy. So basically we did, you know, distance learning. And I know my, my wife's a school teacher. But all those costs that basically were shifted to the, the families of now using your own internet, your own, your own cell phone, your own home phone to basically, you know, try to teach. Those costs, you know, were basically consumed by the teachers, by the families, not, not by the school district. And if, you know, depending on what a hybrid model, I mean, we haven't even had a chance to start talking about what, what September is going to look like. But from what I'm hearing, there could be scenarios where, you know, we're going to be asking our, our staff to, to use their own personal devices and, and personal internet and, and personal cell phones to, you know, basically get the message across. So now does the school incur, incur that cost? Uh, uh, it's just, you know, that's a whole nother conversation, but it's, it's part of a budget that we've got to basically take into consideration of, of, of how we might handle stuff like this.
The next question, shouldn't there be a Plan B now? Why do we need to wait on the governor, on Governor Cuomo? And I think this one is perhaps one that I might ask like Michael Looby to help us with. Why do we have to wait on Governor Cuomo?
Essentially, uh, waiting on Governor Cuomo is Plan B. What we can do without the governor is that you can pass a contingency budget before the, before the thirtieth. Because, but you can't go to the other option that would normally be available to you, which is the revote, until the governor issues the rules for when the revolt is, is, is allowed to happen, under what circumstances it's allowed to happen, whether or not we're going to be allowed to do in-person voting or absentee voting, and then assessing the costs of that. Uh, in a normal situation, uh, had there been no pandemic, uh, clause, under the education law, if a school budget had failed, the school, uh, board would have the discretion under the statute to either go directly to contingency or to, to, to go to a revote that would have happened in the month of June.
Let me just say that that's not the question as I understand it, because I've had several people ask me that question. And what they're asking is that it's uncertain now whether the in-school some of that depends on the numbers go up and they look bad. And so what are we doing as far as having, you know, it was sprung on us very quickly, a more concise learning remotely if we have to. We're during the school year in October, when people, some people like Fauci are predicting, we may have another explosion of COVID. What are we doing so our learning will be better remotely? Some districts actually had class periods, so they were in a class and they got many hours of instruction. I heard complaints that, um, and for my granddaughters, that they got two hours of instruction and not periods. Some of the private schools maybe that have more money, they had a full day. They had their periods stayed. That's a question of what are we going to do to take a look at our remote instruction, which a lot of people work very hard on and to improve it instead of all of a sudden, if we have to go to remote learning, just, you know, then address it. I, I, I think there's got to be something that way. The Plan B, as I understood it from a number of people that approached me was, you know, are we preparing if we have to go remotely, which I think is a, a good possibility.
But Alan, those are actually two, Alan, those are actually two separate questions. This particular one about Plan B was about waiting on a contingency budget or a revote. Yours did not come our way, but I'm very glad you brought it up. It's not my place to address what September looks like. It's your new superintendent's place. And so Jeff and I have had a conversation. He is certainly well aware as a superintendent now of what needs to be considered in order to move forward. Again, there is no guidance for us on how to start school in September. Uh, we certainly learned a lot in the last three months about what we could and could not handle. Just look at our board meetings and the issues that we have being technologically adept right now, when the connectivity issues. If we had tried to go out in March with that thought of online classes, we have teachers who don't have that type of, of connectivity in their own home. Many students don't have that type of connectivity. So we're in a much better place now to address September, October and November than we were in March. Um, and we actually have very different connectivity issues in Eden than they even have in hamburger Frontier. I take a look at Don Street. I don't think he has anything on WePacks, right, Don? And so, um, we're in a better place. I apologize to many parents that we couldn't do some of the things that they were asking us to do. But it's definitely going to need to be addressed for next year. And I agree with the comments that were made before is people are using their own data plans, their own cell phones. There's some teachers that sit on this board. If in fact that becomes the new norm in the fall, it will be an item for negotiation. There's no doubt in my mind.
And I want to focus mostly on the budget in, in this conversation, but I do want to address something that Alan said about the, and I'm not going to name any private schools, but I have several friends who do teach in private schools. And while yes, they did run periods, it wasn't direct and I think what our teachers gave, given the amount of time we had to put things together and figure this out, I think it was pretty darn good. And I'll speak of two of my friends who teach in two different private high schools. Yes, they ran periods with about ten to fifteen minutes of instruction per period and the rest of the time was left open. So it was basically like a, like I'm here if you have questions, otherwise just keep working kind of thing. So it's not like those kids in private schools receive direct instruction all day long, every day. That's, and somehow it was leaving our kids in Eden behind. I think it was comparable. I think it was just laid out differently than some of the other private schools. Um, so I don't think that it was that far off what at any of the high schools were doing, but I want to get back to the budget.
Yes, and my battery is running low guys, so you may lose me here. I'm going to try to switch to another computer. Could we go back to what Michael Looby was talking about, about the governor and the budget for a moment, please?
Sure. Uh, ba- basically the, uh, the problem is that, uh, the situation we have now approaching July is not covered by existing statutory law. And so we have to rely on the executive orders. The last order that addressed it was last week when the governor said that, uh, there would be the opportunity for a revote at some point, date uncertain after July seven or July nine rather, and that it, the procedure for that and the timing of that would be addressed by a further order. As of this morning, when I checked, there is no such further order. So we're still waiting, uh, to do that. Uh, so the only option that you actually have that you could do anytime between now and the thirtieth is the contingency budget or the contingent, contingency budget, as we've suggested, that contemplates reserving the option to, to go to a revote when we know what that is allowed to look like and when it, and when we are told when it can happen.
Are we ready to move on to the next screen? Yes.
What happens to the new fourth grade teacher? At this point in time, the new fourth grade teacher is still in the budget. It's under the program section, which did not see heavy cuts. So at this time, it's still in the budget. Due to COVID nineteen, several families in Eden Central School District have lost their job, in furlough, have not received pay raises, headed compensation reduced, et cetera. Has a pay freeze or other similar labor cost reduction measure being considered for all district employees as a show of solidarity for all members of the Eden community to offset or eliminate the tax increase being proposed.
Sandy, did you want to address that one?
I don't think Sandy's on right now.
So again, that would require negotiations and to eat. So at this point in time, those are, talks are happening. We have talked about, um, some freezing and some compensation for sports or other extracurriculars for community members that have been hired who are not part of a collective bargaining agreement. So we are working on these as we speak. We just don't have a definitive answer. And it's very difficult to get all this done while trying to get a budget reorganized and cast. So other than the outcome of the original school budget vote, what is the purpose of conducting a revote? Are we correct to assume some sort of voting issue?
I think the answer to that, I think the answer to that is no, uh, it's not correct to assume a voting issue. What we are looking at is the standard procedure that's provided by the statute to give two options to a board of education when a vote has failed. And those two options are to take one more crack at the apple before you have to go to contingency budget or to go directly to a contingency budget. There's nothing new or unusual about that. It is the process that the state has, uh, embedded into the, uh, education law for many, many years, uh, to recognize the fact that there are occasions on which school district budgets fail at the, at the district annual election.
And that's the last question I have from the public.
Laura, thanks for addressing everything. Thank you.
So Laura, back to, back to number seven, um, that, that's being asked. So we still don't know what the direct effect is in regards to state aid. And, you know, if, if there's a state aid cut of, of twenty percent, then number seven is seriously going to get discussed. But, you know, completely understand, you know, the, the situation with, you know, people bearing furlough, the unemployment rates where it's at. I said on a, an economic, um, uh, webinar here the other day, and they're saying, you know, fourth quarter, early twenty twenty-one before, you know, we, we really start to see this, uh, economy coming back. And the, and the unemployment numbers being reduced. So, um, you know, just to address number seven, that has been discussed. But I think that's more of a, uh, a deeper cut in more of a, a state aid issue.
And in addition to that too, Don, you're not going to be able to put forward the reserves next year that you've been able to offset the budget with this year.
Right.
Michael, can you just address what happened in the Rochester area mid-year last year with layoffs?
Actually, I don't, I did, did not follow what was going on in the Rochester school district with any great attention. I, I don't feel really well.
Let me change the question. Have you in your experiences seen school districts in a situation mid-year where they had to readjust because of extra expenses?
Yes. And it's been addressed in school districts in a number of different ways. Occasionally, for example, uh, school districts confronted with that have looked at the possibility of, of early retirements, particularly if there's an incentive offered by the state. I understand that there is one at Albany Bay that's being actually considered. That's a de- device that school districts sometimes use to, uh, trim off some of the, uh, the staff level at the, at the, close to retirement age, which tends to be a little bit, uh, more salary and benefits heavy than, than the younger workers. And the, the boards may then defer, uh, the, the filling of the positions or filling them at a lower issue. There have been situations where they have said, we have to exercise our discretion to, uh, to do reductions, uh, that has effects on class size and some other things. to do reductions that has effects on class size and some other things, and occasionally triggers mandatory impact bargaining with the unions. But it is one of the things that you, you do from time to time if, if, if you really need to. The state law again will come in and, and govern what you do when you're doing reductions of teaching and administrative staff so that the, you get to identify, for example, the, the tenure area that you're going to reduce, but you don't get the chance to choose who is going to be reduced. That works on a seniority level and is a, is a function of statute. So that when you are faced with that situation, you may have a, a, a teacher in the science tenure area who is an absolute star, but is also the junior in, the junior person in seniority. And that's the person you lose when you make that choice.
Thank you.
Michael, can you talk about typically when you consider the time between now and let's say we get till July 28th for a revote, your experience in the timeframe that it takes to renegotiate a contract with a, with one union, let alone with the the three unions we have here?
It takes a significant amount of time. It depends a little bit, of course, on the size of the union. It depends a little bit on the relationships that you've had with the union and, you know, where you've had a contentious situation with the union. It can take quite a while. Let me, let me give you an example. In a normal bargaining situation in the city of Buffalo, it was not possible to reach an agreement with the union on a new, new agreement. And the Buffalo Teachers Federation and the Buffalo City School District were in a situation of negotiating a successor agreement for nearly a decade. That's fairly unusual. I mean, there was also a fair amount of litigation during that decade, between the two parties. More typically, what's possible will depend on how severe the cuts are proposed. If you're, if, if you're looking at an issue of one or two positions and possibly addressing what a contract may have to say about class size and so forth, that is probably an easier lift than when you're talking about a, a cut that's going to involve 10 or 15 or 20 members of the unit.
And Michael, it's my understanding that not all unions locally can make decisions on their own. They have to go to their state affiliations when they're doing contract negotiations of this type. Is that correct?
I can, that's true with CCA. Our local does not own their own contract.
Yeah, that, that's partially true. It depends on which unit and it depends on how the, how the union is structured. There are internal governance and internal constitution issues that you'd, you'd have to look at the specific union and their affiliates.
Okay. But could we back up and address a next meeting on a calendar item? There's going to be action items that the board needs to take prior to July 1, based on what Michael has said to us. So the question that I have on the table at the moment is, is do you want to wait on, until Monday or Tuesday and see if the governor gives us more information? Do you want to meet early and adopt a contingency budget that would get you through to another decision? What is your hope?
I think in general, my hope is that we can have an in-person election. I would not be in favor of another mailing election. I'm, I'm not certain that the cost could be justified when everyone already had an opportunity to vote. And so I would like the guidance from the governor to be able to say, this is, we're going to allow face-to-face election and this is the date. And hopefully that comes within the next, say, five to seven days.
I agree with Jack. I think to spend another $20,000 on an absentee ballot election, I would not be in favor of that at all. I think our budget was a good budget. I think it justified the needs of the district. And I, and I, I would like to see it voted on again in, in some way, shape or form. Well, I, let me backtrack. I would like to see it voted on again, but only if it's an in-person vote. I can't feel confident, not confident, comfortable justifying the cost of an absentee.
And I agree with both of what you're saying because I, I just think that's such an enormous amount of money to be spent, which would be better used for our school.
I, I agree with everyone. I'm just hoping you can have an in-person vote. I, I agree also.
Yes, I do too, because I really feel to spend the money on the absentee vote, is that really going to change? Are people going to become that much more comfortable doing that? Are they going to become that much more educated on how to do it? I mean, I think it's just going to pretty much risk spending all that money for the same result. I think they're more comfortable with an in-person and I hope the governor, you know, especially being that, I don't know the other schools that failed in, on New York, but I mean, we're a small district. It'd be very easy to circle distance for an in-person vote.
I would like to see what the guidance is going to be from the governor, you know, before we make any, any decisions, whether it's a, an in-person vote or a, another mailing vote, but just as we start looking at the, the possible dates, we need to consider at least printing a fair amount of absentee ballots because the number of vacations that may be taking place and make that crystal clear on the front of the website, you know, top page, hey, this is how you would get an absentee ballot. Just because I know it's one week in, in July, there's going to be roughly 25 of us from Eden that are all eligible voters that are going to be on Cuba Lake vacation.
So Michael, based on what you've just heard, you've heard from six of the seven board members, what is your recommendation for us on next steps?
I think the recommendation that I would have to would be to adopt a resolution along the lines of the one we sent over, which approves a contingency budget with the, the, the option of, of going to a revote if we have no, if we have no authority from the governor or no direction from the governor yet, or going directly to the contingency budget. But I think because there is still some possibility that we will have the flexibility to do the in-house voting, I would suggest waiting at least a couple of more days to Friday or to Monday so that we can, we can know whether or not you've gotten that, that, that permission. If you don't know by the end of the year, that by the end of the month that you're going to be able to do an in-vote, then there wouldn't be any point in not just going directly to the contingency budget.
So Lucinda, I have a question for you. Based on what happened to us Monday morning, and we've pretty much identified that it's because of updates that occur over the weekends. Are you concerned about us doing a Monday morning board meeting?
Absolutely. Maybe could we do it a little later? Maybe not at eight o'clock? Could we do it at 10 o'clock? So I could
Or do it Tuesday?
Tuesday's perfectly fine.
Is that the last thing you want to do, your last day here, Sandy?
I can't wait for it done. I did start counting yesterday. I'll admit this. So we're worried about updates over the weekend that would occur to us if we had an early morning Monday meeting. You could push it to later in the day or you could, or evening, or you could push it to Tuesday morning. I, I'm, I'm on the clock. It does not matter to me what the board decides.
Let's just do Tuesday and, and hopefully we get some guidance by then.
Tuesday, eight o'clock?
Tuesday's good.
That's fine.
And let's just summarize. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Let's just summarize what the purpose of Tuesday morning's meeting is. It's to adopt a resolution, as I was hearing Michael talked about. Michael, help me on, just on the summary. It's to adopt a resolution to approve a contingency budget until a revote and if a revote occurs. Is that correct?
Yes. What I, what I will do is I've given you, I've given you one resolution along that line. I'll draft the second alternative. And the second alternative will be the one that goes directly to contingency budget. And that was the one you would probably want to consider if we have no guidance from the governor, or if the governor's guidance is that you have to do the, the full absentee program if you want to have one at all. Because I, I, I get it. I perceive that the perception, the perception of the entire board is that it's difficult to justify the cost of a, of a, of full absentee. So if, if that's the only option that, that you're given, then there wouldn't be any point in having the reservation for a revote. You could just say, fine, we'll make the choice that we have under the statute.
All right. Michael, are you available Tuesday morning at eight to join us?
I would be delighted.
All right. And could you please resend what you've been speaking about? Because I don't see it in my email.
Okay, I will do that.
All right. Is there anything else? Laura, the board, Barb, anybody?
I'm good. Thank you. Oh, I apologize for my in and out video. I, I was walking around. I decided to black myself out in an effort to try to find the best internet signal during the meeting.
My video seems to have been affected by updates my computer had last Friday, and I have not yet had a chance to turn it over to tech long enough for them to look at it.
There you go. All right. Are we good?
I'd like to thank Sandy and Laura for all their, their work. Sandy, when you're calling out, I'm sorry, you're, you're stuck with this at the last minute.
Well, thank you, Alan. This is what I would say to you until we meet again, is that Eden is worth it. Of the four school districts that I have worked in, it is my absolute favorite. I would continue to fight for this community and for this school district. It's worthwhile. You have staff and you have teachers and parents and community that absolutely love this town and have moved here for a particular reason. And that's all we're attempting to do is to sustain and maintain that. But thank you.
I would suggest that you end then with a motion to recess until Tuesday at eight o'clock.
Somebody make that motion.
Make a motion to recess until Tuesday morning at 8:00 AM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're abstaining. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
Sandy and Cheryl with graduation. Looks like good weather.
Yeah, that's good. Nope, we're staying inside. We've got temperature control and lighting control. And it's really beautiful what the PTA has done for us. And, and the parents can always come back outside and do what they need to, like they did the other day too. So it gives them an extra opportunity. The other place advantage of that, Don, is that we can get two or three families in at the same time.
I know we are a journey, but but I'll just say informally, I, graduation, I experienced it on Monday. It was absolutely amazing. And it moved me to tears. It was great to see all the kids. I thought it was a very intimate experience. And it was just really fun to be a part of it.
Cool. Thank you.
So thanks.
All right, we'll talk again. Bye.
Bye, everybody.